I call the meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation, and that is for the good of our citizens.
Thank you very much. Board member Xavier Moody-Wuzik is excused from today's meeting. I'd like to start by please observing a moment of silence with me for the following. Aaron Koch, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. James Halsworth, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Eleanor Terrell, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Richard Haskins, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Marilyn Hartshorn, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Okay, thank you very much. Begin by reading a proclamation for School Administrators Appreciation Day. School administrators, the leaders of public schools, have had a positive impact on students, staff, parents, and members of the community at large. School administrators energize students and staff, respond to student needs, empower others, and recognize and celebrate achievement. School administrators, whether they work directly in a school building or at the district level, share the common goal of providing the foundation, environment, and professional learning community, which all students can learn and learn well. School administrators are entrusted with the well-being of our community's most precious members, the children. The administrators of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. Students, parents, staff, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to provide children with a five-star quality educational program. To honor the administrative staff of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, the children, I, Paul Farfali, President of the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education, on behalf of the Board of Education, express our deepest gratitude to our administrators and proclaim November 4th, 2021, as School Administrator Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. I get a motion and a second motion, Mr. Crabtree Sec from Ms. Scanlon. All in favor? Pose that is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, we now have a presentation on the North Syracuse Early Education Program Budget. If Ms. Hussein could come forward, thank you.
There we go. Good evening. I'm Dawn Hussein. I'm the principal at the North Syracuse Early Education Program. I'll apologize upfront. I have a little bit of a touch of bronchitis, so I have a little bit of a cough. I hope to not cough my way through the presentation. I'm here tonight to talk to you about our 2021-2022 school year anticipated budget. So in tonight's presentation, I'll make some comparisons between this year, last year, and the time before COVID. Last year, we had to close a half-day classroom due to low enrollment. But I'm happy to report that all classrooms are open this fall and all students are attending in person. Last year, we had capped our class size to 12, so we had just under 200 students. This year, we're back to enrolling 16 students per class. And as of today, we have 267 students enrolled, which is not quite our normal enrollment of around 300, but definitely better than where we were last year. We have 11 school districts that are represented in our population. And currently, 71% of our students, both Gen Ed and Special Ed, are North Syracuse residents. We also had a really large increase in our poverty levels this year, which did qualify us for a higher level of Title I funding. Last year, with the closed classroom, we had to reduce a few of our staff members. We're back to full staffing and then some. The therapy needs of our students are greater this year, so we've had to hire a part-time occupational therapist and physical therapist. And we're happy to have maintained our social worker for a second year in a row through the Title I funding. So as for revenue, our tuition rates from the state and the county for special education students remain the same since there was a 0% increase in funding. For our general education students, we conducted our normal market analysis for the parent-paid tuition, adjusted accordingly. We also receive additional funding through flow-through money from the eight outside districts for our special education students, CPSC grant money, and evaluation revenue. This slide represents a summary of the estimated special education and general education tuition revenue, including the summer session for this current school year. Our estimated tuition revenue is just under $5.6 million. Estimated expenditures for the school year are just under $6.6 million, which is an anticipated 5% increase over last year. This pie chart represents a different view of the estimated expenditures for the school year. And you can see that over 95% of our expenses are directly related to staff, salary, and benefits. So like everyone else, COVID has certainly presented us with some challenges. As I mentioned earlier, we chose to reduce our class size to 12 students from 16. And we did this in order to maintain a five-day week for our special education students last year. Due to our low enrollment from limited evaluations, we had to close the half-day classroom until the 1st of February, when we could fill it. Our students are presenting with greater delays, so we need more therapists. In addition, our reimbursement for our one-to-one teaching assistance changed after the fact, after the school year was over, which left us with a negative financial impact. Lastly, we were also penalized financially by the county and the state when the district changed the end date for the end of the school year. And unrelated to COVID, we've lost many students to the district UPK since the change to full-day UPK and with the additional seats. Another challenge is that we've been made aware that our methodology for reimbursement from the state has changed, impacting this current school year. We're yet to know what that calculation will look like. You may have heard that Speaker Carl Hasty and Assemblyman Al Sterpi visited our school last month. And this was an attempt to stress the importance that the governor signed the bill that's on her desk to provide equitable funding increases to 4410 special education preschool programs like ours compared to that of school districts. And lastly, we suffered a $500,000 deficit last year and anticipate about the same for this year unless there's an increase from the state. So on the bright side of things, there have been some positive things that have happened to us over the past year, of course. We've been approved to add our half-day classrooms to work with the Second Step Social Emotional Program through a grant through the Petals Organization. We have an assigned coach that spends several days a week at our school. And we've recently started using the EDECA, which is an assessment tool for social emotional. All of our full-day teachers will be doing that assessment this year in addition to one volunteer half-day classroom. As I mentioned earlier, we're also receiving additional funding through Title I since we had a higher poverty rate. And with this money, we'll be doing a lot of great things. So we're establishing a monthly coffee connection, which is a parent training night. We're working on developing a summer reading program. We'd like to add a social worker to our summer staff, our summer program. And we also have set aside a small fund for at-risk general education students. We continue to qualify for free breakfast and lunch for all of our students through the CEP, the Community Eligibility Provision. And the last thing that we're kind of working on right now is doing some fundraising and some grant, reaching out for some grant opportunities for shade structures to add to our playground that we put in last year. And those are the highlights of our budget for this current school year. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Sorry to have my back to all of you.
I have one, but I'll let you go first. Well, I'm trying to ask it correctly. I think I asked it last year and I may not have asked it right. You referenced the UPK impact on you're losing students. And I'm assuming those are general ed students you're losing.
Correct, yes.
I know there's an impact just in the student number drop and what that does. My understanding was there's, that we have a requirement of a ratio of general ed to special ed for inclusion for a certain funding category or funding rate. Is that...
Yeah, the 4410, yes, the 4410 should be, really, it should be a 50-50 ratio. It should be 50% special ed and 50% general ed. We are not quite there yet with our general ed population.
And the UPK, which is a good thing, but that's hurting that, I'm assuming.
Right. And so this year, we kind of tracked it because every year we lose a few students that have registered with us. And then, once the UPK registration comes out, a few students will withdraw from us. And that's not unusual. But this year, we calculated, so far, we're at about $45,000 that we've lost from students that have moved from, like, were enrolled in our program and then moved into the UPK program.
Okay. Thank you.
So yes, keeping a ratio, though, of the general ed students has always been a challenge for us.
Right. Okay, thank you. And I don't know if Dawn wants to chime in or you, but we have a few new board members. Just if you could tell us the relationship or remind us the, between, you know, the North Syracuse Early Education Program and North Syracuse Central School District, as far as the budget, what's yours, what's not?
Yeah, I probably should have explained that a little bit better.
I just, I understand it.
So, yeah. So we are, 4410 is a specific category that is special education funding, integrated preschool. All of our funding comes through the state and county and is funneled through the district. So all of our employees are North Syracuse staff members, but our funding is very separate from the general budget. So that's why our presentation is separate. Everything is really separate. And the challenges are different, right?
I just, I thank you for repeating that. I just think it's important for people to continue to hear that. I mean, that's why we had Carl Hasty here the other day. That bill is specifically for 4410 schools and the funding issue that has been a challenge as long as I can remember here before I was on the board. So, thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I love that picture because that's what your staff does every single day. It's an amazing staff. I know some of the staff members personally, they give so much to your school and your leadership is outstanding. Dedication of a playground, that they spent hours and hours of their own time raising the funds for that playground, going out and getting people to donate money. When Mr. Hasty was here, Mr. Mannion was here also, Mr. Sterpi, your staff was there. I don't see that all the time in other schools, but your staff is so caring for your school. You do a marvelous job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just have a couple of questions, too. So you said that the revenue was the same this year as last year. Is that typical? I mean, I know this was a different time.
Yeah, so it has varied from year to year. I would say, this is my 11th school year. And when I first started, there was a stretch of, I think, about seven years where there was 0% funding. And that was when our program had to cut over $1 million from our expenses in order to stay open. Then there was a few years in a row where we had a 2% increase. And that was good because that compounds year after year. And so a 2% increase is healthy enough for us to stay, you know, functional. So we had that two years ago. Last year was a 0%. And this year, they're telling us it's a 0%. And probably the more unknown is that they're changing the complete methodology of how they will reimburse us. And we're living it right now, but we don't know how that methodology will look. So that probably is even more scary than a 0% increase.
Right. Where to come with that? And so we're taking from the fund balance again this year. And is our fund balance going to be okay? It's within limits?
Correct. Yeah, you should have a copy of the fund balance sheet that was passed around. And yes, we should have enough fund balance to cover us for last year and this year.
The same as for our budget? No?
No.
But it's the same? Are they required? No, okay. Okay. And so I heard you say that our enrollment's up, but we're not to capacity. Is there, like, what are we doing to publicize?
Yes. So our enrollment is up over last year, but not over the previous year. The normal things that we do is we advertise in the Family Times Magazine. We normally attend any and all preschool fairs that we can be at, which were all eliminated, you know, the past couple of years. So we haven't really been able to attend anything like that. We have a great sign out front now, which certainly people have said, wow, I never knew you were here. And so we saw the sign, you know? So I think the sign is helpful just in everyday people driving by. Word of mouth is probably our hugest transfer of information, right? People talk. And so a lot of people that come in for tours are coming because they knew somebody that attended our program or, you know, they attended our program themselves. And so that's probably the best way. But certainly, if you have any great ideas and get the word out, we would love to entertain that.
Let me think on that one. But I want to second what Bob said as well. It's such a great program there. I always enjoyed when I was able to come into the building. And I missed that last year, so hopefully I'll get back in there. Thanks so much for all you do.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, next, we have comments from the audience. We have one speaker registered, that's Shatavia Adams. And you may come up and speak with the mic, make sure the microphone's on because this is recorded and, whatever that other word is, transmitted. Broadcast, there you go. And I think you talked to the clerk and aware of the rules. Just be aware it's three minutes and not to discuss any issues involving a particular student or circumstance or employees of the district. But it's all yours. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Shatavia Adams. The topic that I would like to be heard on is accountability for all. I feel if accountability is to be instilled in our children, we have to hold ourselves to the same standard of accountability. No one person, regardless of their status, race, or gender, should be above that. There should be more programs in place for continued learning and education for teachers and administrators that help keep them updated on events and issues that are current in the world of today and effective communication with parents. I read that in the Parent Handbook that our success or failure is often determined by how well we learn to live and work in close relationship with other people. This statement stood out to me because I feel every day and in every way and every field, there's always room to learn and grow. But also because it's important to understand that the other people that you may have to work closely with may not look the same as you. They may not talk the same as you, and they may not believe the same things that you do. But that shouldn't determine how you treat them or how you work with someone. In the event that this occurs with an administrator or a person of authority, accountability should be held to said person. This is an area that I feel has been neglected. Administration such as principals and vice principals directly impact many teachers and even more students, which is why accountability needs to be held for all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And please feel free to submit that in writing so we all can have a copy of that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Board of Education Committee reports. So Ms. Scanlon, if you think you just have a meeting coming up, correct?
Yes, our policy committee is meeting next week on October 26th at 5:00 PM via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Crabtree?
The Legislative Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, October 20th, from 5:00 to 6:00. And we will talk about what Ms. Houston, well, that'll be on our agenda each month until the governor signs that bill. And we have some new parents coming. We're going to have two, three new parents. And I want to thank Jen for sending them the information. And we'll be meeting by Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crabtree. I'll be on there. I might be on a mobile Zoom and then transfer. Well, it's got that, like, you know, follows the lines. It was a joke, guys. Sorry. Superintendent's comments, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you. We have our new math director, Nick. In my conversations with him, right now, he's trying to go around and talk to people in the district and kind of get the lay of the land. But I will be bringing him to the board after a month or two so that he can report out on just some of the things that he's looking to you to get going and just so that you get a chance to see him. But he's doing well currently in his new role. The other day, I had the pleasure to watch Mr. Renary, his physics class. They are always outside of our window over there. And they measure the speed of cars on Taff Road. And so he has the young students out front, and it's a good, just a lesson. And they get out on a nice day, but I did want to acknowledge that he has them working on some practical things during the day. The other thing that I do want to comment on, and I know Mrs. Goldberg is not here, but I've gone around the district to meet some of the Promise Zone specialists. And I do want to let you know that the more people that we are putting into the system, they are connecting with our students. And I was able to see that firsthand at the junior high the other day. First thing in the morning, students are coming up, engaging, and they're really liking the fact that we have more hands on deck and they're making connections. The last thing that I have is that I was finally able to get to a girls' swim meet this past week. Many of them had been either relocated or closed down because the pool at Nottingham was not able to have us. And then, when they relocated, they did not allow visitors. So it was nice to get to their last meet. It was senior night. But again, trying to get to these events are important for everyone, especially the students and families. Thank you.
Okay, and Board of Education comments, open for the board. I'll look to you, Mr. Crabtree.
So I read the paper because I'm retired and I have lost a lot of time. But anyway, our students have athletically been amazing this fall. You have to remember that our students did not participate for almost a year in any activity. They were stuck at home. I don't know. I mean, I had trouble with it. But Mark, who goes to all the swim meets and takes photographs, must be very proud of Caitlin Carroll. They call themselves Salt City Athletic Division. I finally learned that, what it stands for, conference. She, in the conference final, am I correct about this, Mark? She got a score of 463.35, almost 100 points. And this is competing with all these schools, FM, Liverpool. She had over 100 points more than any other girl. She's amazing. I have not seen her, but she's amazing. Our girls' soccer team, 15, 0, and 1. My principal's back there. Number seven in the state, and they're seeded first in the sectionals, which are starting this week. Boys' soccer, Mr. McCaffrey received his 400th win as a CNS coach. That's amazing, to be in one school district and to be a coach. And I've gone to some of the games, and they will be playing Utica Proctor on the same night of our meeting at 7:00, and they'll be playing at the high school. Our golfers, number three in Class AA. And they will be sending six to the state, six, that's amazing, six young men in the spring, because it's in the spring. Football team, as Dan knows, it was not a good night two weeks ago, okay? But as I say, all good teams don't have great nights. If you go to SU, you know what I'm talking about. They're 4-2, and I say, just watch to the end of the season because I have faith that they're going to win the sectional championship. And then the last team I wanted to talk about is the field hockey team, to the principals again. They're doing amazing, and they'll be playing Liverpool tomorrow night at our high school in the sectionals. We have wonderful, and I know academically, we have great students. Our band will be performing October 31st, Halloween. If you don't want to give candy out, go to the Dome. And you will see a great group of kids marching and performing at the Dome. But I did this last year, and I'm going to say it again. This week, as you all received something from the New York School Boards Association, it's Honor School Board Week, October 18th to 22nd. We are all volunteers at this table. We all are similar in certain areas. We all differ. I might differ with Mary on a topic, or I might Dr. Kramer. But we work very well as a school board. We're volunteers. We care about the kids. We care about our district. Our superintendent has done an outstanding job for two years. But it's a pleasure to work with these people around this table. I just enjoy coming on Monday nights. It's kind of sad. But I enjoy coming to a meeting and listening to your views and listening to your questions. You are amazing people. I truly mean that. I truly mean that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Yes, any...
Well, I do. Thank you for that, Bob. We really appreciate it. I think everyone here at the table feels the same way. We are a good board. We work well together. And looking forward to retreat that's coming up soon so we can spend a little bit more of that time. I think appropriately tonight with our speaker, pointing out the fact that our chancellor mentioned diversity, equity, and inclusion. And it is at the forefront of our thoughts and making changes and getting things done. Personally, I have two or three of my children are in the LGBTQ community. So that diversity and inclusion and acceptance, that we all look alike, we all look different. We all think different. And we need to embrace those differences, whatever they may be. And I do look forward to moving that along in the, you know, I'd like to say months to come. I know it's going to take longer than that. But certainly, while I'm sitting here, I'm very much looking forward to making, seeing those changes happen.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to our routine action items. I'll look for a motion for consideration of the approval of the minutes of the meeting of October 4, 2021. Motion, Mrs. Scanlon, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. I get a motion, the group items B, C, and D together, please. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Those of the consideration of classification of the disabled students by the CSC, by the classification of preschool disabled students and Home Instruction Review Committee's classification of the placement of students in home instruction. So we have B, C, and D in front of us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose those items are carried. And then, please, a motion for E, acknowledgment of business office reports for July. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose item is carried. Discussion action items, a motion, please, for A, to request to approve the corrective action plan and management letters required by the state comptroller. Motion, Mr. Herman, second from Kruger. Any questions or discussion on that item? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. B, please, and C together, the motions to create a point for FTE health teacher and to create one registered nurse and one registered nurse district-wide. I'm sorry, district-wide registered nurse at one FTE and a district-wide registered nurse and half at Gillette Road and split Gillette Road and Roxwell. Did I get that correct? Okay, a motion, please, put that before us, Ms. Marizio, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Pose that is carried. And D, a motion, please, a declaration of remarkable surplus. Motion, Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. Personnel instructional report personnel, A, please. Motion, put that before us, motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose personnel A is carried. Personnel, staff personnel report B. Motion, please, said before us, motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose personnel B is carried. At this time, I'm going to make a motion then myself to move into executive session for the purpose of hearing two parental appeals of a superintendent's decision and to review two legal matters with the act, with action to follow on the parental appeals of a superintendent's decision and for the purpose of reviewing the employment records of two individuals with no action to follow. If I can get a second for that, second from Ms. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose for an executive session. I should adjourn the meeting, then we'll reconvene it. So motion to adjourn the meeting, motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Pose, we are adjourned for the moment. Thank you.